So we're prepared that when it comes to budget in July, that I've asked each department to be prepared to what they've, what increases to be prepared to cut those by 50% if necessary. So just looking forward into how we land the whole budget, which includes operations and capital. We have had cost increases, so which are reflected in here. And there's also putting back some capital such as parks that were removed last year. So that's really just the simplicity of it is that we do have, and we're not sure what the anticipated revenue will be generated by our property taxes this year. And so we are preparing in the event that the last year's property values are significantly less than the previous year, that we would be prepared, if need be, to make further reductions in the capital improvement plan. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
This morning, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this morning, the chairman asked for an agenda item to come back on items that are in our consent agenda that don't appear to be known or understood. And so maybe Mr. Donaldson or Ms. Merly could explain what it is we're doing in this process, why it is we do this now, and the adoption of this, or the tentative adoption of this prior to budget and the budget process, so that maybe it's better understood by our public as to what really are we doing. And then when, when that happens, what is the follow-on when we get an agenda item six months from now or a year from now that has items in it that have already been approved? Why is it we do that?
So I think, and I can go into more detail in the future, but in, and I think the capital improvement plan is an example of other expenditures that you've already budgeted in your, in your operations, such as supplies that we're talking about in our previous agenda item just before break, medical supplies and things for fire rescue. Within their operations budget, or here in the capital budget, they'll, this is the first phase of the process, but ultimately results in the board adopting formally into the county's budget, a capital improvement plan that allows for the expenditures on various projects within each department's purview. And this is capital projects, which will become effective in October after it's done. So in, in it, this sheet not only identifies what we anticipate to spend as a budgeted, approved budget for next fiscal year, but also includes planning for the future. But getting back to, I think, Commissioner Smith's question, which is for what would be approved next year, which I think in the, in our summary sheet has roughly $108 million worth of projects, and under various categories, whether it's construction or planning dollars, consulting fees, or land acquisition, or different categories of spending. There's another whole process that goes, that is very open in how we actually procure those services. So you'll have the agenda items that talk about awarding them, and then under OMB, you'll have items that we're actually expending those funds. Grants get tied into that as well. Those get reflected even in those consent items, as you've actually already proved items, and they're just showing the cash flow that's going out for these various items. So that if you understand that there's roughly $100 million here, plus the other areas, that you would anticipate, that you're, you would at any given agenda on your item, that you would be spending, you know, tens of millions of dollars on going out the door to things that you approved in your budget. And I think, you know, what Commissioner Campy asked for, I can probably elucidate a little more precisely in a future agenda item. I was thinking of sort of, you know, how your dollar gets spent, or something like that, but, and following a particular approval, and how it shows up again in the clerk of court, of course, is the one who audits our items and also gets reflected in their budget. So you could ultimately track that check that was issued to XYZ Company to, back to how it was procured, back to how it was originally budgeted in your original approval, which goes back to all these public hearings, such as the one today.
So, thank you for that. And so every dollar we spend is accounted for either in our CIP, or it's accounted for in our budget.
Correct.
So we have two separate hearing sort of strategies or processes. This is the first of building our budget. And so if this is approved, and whether everything in here is approved or not, when we tentatively approve it, and then we approve the budget, we will have discussed everything other than something that comes in off the cuff that we didn't anticipate, but we will have discussed it, voted on it, and had public hearings on all of it. Come time when six months, eight months from now, an item shows up on our agenda, it would have already been discussed, already approved, but maybe not actually purchased, or not gone through the procurement process by which you would then put it on consent, or if it met the threshold for what the state requirements were on thresholds, or our requirements on thresholds, it would otherwise show up on an agenda item.
Correct. So these expenditures that you are possibly tentatively approving will be seen three more times before we adopt it on, on October. So now, when we have our budget workshop in July, that'll be rolled into your total budget, and then at the public hearings in September, both of them, the tentative and the final.
Great. Thank you for that.
All right. We're going to begin our FY '24 capital improvement plan. During this workshop, we're going to be define the capital improvement plan, CIP, project origination and progress, revenue planning and proposed expenditures, FY '24 CIP project highlights, FY '24 capital impact to overall budget, and the board review of FY '24 CIP. What is a capital improvement plan? The CIP is a proposed schedule for the expenditure fund to maintain, construct, and protect the county's infrastructure over the next 10-year period. All the revenues are required to both be available and feasible. With approval of the CIP, the board acknowledges the product, projects contained in the plan represent a reasonable interpretation of the anticipated needs of the, for the county. Projects contained in the first year of FY '24 CIP will be included in the FY '24 budget. CIP projects originate from a variety of sources, such as master plans, infrastructure needs, levels of service requirements, and more. The CIP is an ever-evolving process of identifying needs. The capital improvement plan is an important step in our annual budget progress, process. While most of the FY '24 capital improvement plan is a continuation of the previous year's projects, there are some worth noting, which will be discussed in more detail by the respective departments. Keep your eyes and ears open for details on the following projects. So for parks, we have Indian River Riverside Park Boardwalk, ECO, we have East Fort Creek's Phase Two Stormwater Treatment Area, Coastal, Mantie Pocket, Morning Field, Hope Heights Outfall for Stormwater, Roads, we have the Beau Rivage Neighborhood Restoration, and for Kumi Development, we have Old Palm City Place and Patio. Utilities, we have Coral Gardens, Sewer Conversion is one of our projects, Public Buildings, or Martin County Health Department, VAV Replacement, and for Library, the Hope Sound Library Outdoor Space. With the CIP presented today, the county is looking at a potential tax and/or millage increase if approved. The CIP has additional $13 million in budget avaloreum revenues over the fiscal year '23. As an aside, but not included in today's presentation, is a potential of a $2 million increase in technology investment that will be brought to the board's attention in July budget workshop. This slide represents avaloreum impact per department, which totals to approximately $13 million increase over FY '24. Here's a snapshot of projects that have contributed to FY '24 avaloreum impact. We have fire rescue with the equipment replacement, law enforcement, logistics and operations, Timer Powers Park, and countywide FAB for parks. Public Buildings, we have courthouse, NCOB HVAC replacement. Stormwater is the Hope Heights Outfall, and ecosystem has a various of TMDL and BMAP compliance projects. And Roads has a variance of resurfacing projects. The county CIP is 11% of the total county budget pie, which is still, which is still in the budget preparation process, and will be brought to the board in July. And because FY, and because CIP projects typically involve the outlay of substantial funds, numerous sources of revenue are necessary to provide financing over the duration of the projects. Most capital funding sources are earmarked for a particular purpose and cannot be transferred from one capital project to another. An example of this would be enterprise fee-based projects, such as airport fees, to assist in the rehab of a runway.
I'm going to talk about the potential millage impacts based on the CIP. As you all know, we're very early in our budget development process, so the CIP is our first step in forming those. So based on what we know now, which is not much at all, in conservative taxable value estimates, the approval of the CIP is presented could potentially result in a county-wide taxing authority increase of approximately 5%. Now, we're still far, far away from a 10 mil cap for these, for these expenditures, but an incremental increase such as this, which would not be very much, could have voting implications back in September, when we go ahead to vote on those things. So as Don mentioned, county administration has directed staff to prepare alternative recommendations considering proposed cut. In the event our taxable values come in significantly lower than we're expecting, but we don't have a crystal ball, and nobody at the property pages will let us know what we're looking at. So we're trying our best now to estimate going forward with what we have.
This ends my part of the presentation. Does anyone have any questions before we dive into the department highlight slides?
Before they start, if you go back that one slide, I think, I just wanted, this was not meant for you to read, but more illustrative of what the state has us go through in terms of what, what constitutes a, a budget change and how things vote. And it's, it's complicated in the fact that they take into effect of what happened last year, where we are at this year, CPI increases. And so the formula that the state dictates, one, it's very restrictive. It's to, to make it difficult for local governments to, to generate funds necessary to do your job at times. And I really just put that out there, just simply that the determination of voting requirements when we're looking at a budget, it is, the state has made it exceedingly complicated, and it really doesn't take much of a change to make the change in threshold. So for instance, we're looking at probably less than a 5% increase, but that could mean the difference between a, a majority and a supermajority vote of relatively small amounts. And I think that was really all I wanted to key to you, is that sometimes it doesn't take much of a change for the state mandated requirements to, to kick in. Thank you.
Do we have any questions before we dive into highlight slides?
Okay.
We should spin the wheel and just pick.
All right. Library is first.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jen Salas, Library Director.
During Library Week and Library Volunteer Week, you planned it that way?
No. So we are asking for a slight avaloreum increase of $23,500 for our radio frequency identification system. This is to do the 10-year lifecycle replacements for our sorters and self-check machines, which does save us staff time and allows staff to go to other areas of the library to help with public service. We highlighted on this slide our Hope Sound Library Improvement Project, which is through a $1.6 million private donation, and we're really excited about that. We've been working with an architect to start planning some things out, so we do have an outdoor space that will be included in that. We're also working with the Art and Public Places Board to be able to include a mural project, as well as some decorative art book benches to go with the outdoor pavilion that we would be building. But there are some improvements within the library as well that we'll be using with that donation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Was that your money? That's nice.
No.
If it's anonymous, it was me. Any questions for Ms. Salas and the library?
Do you want tentative votes?
Yes, please.
Move tentative approval of the library budget.
Second.
Anyone from the public looking to address us? Any of your colleagues looking to give a yay or a nay? Seeing none? We have a motion for the tentative approval, approval, adoption?
tentative approval.
Tentative approval of the library fiscal 2024 CIP sheets from Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is fire rescue.
Good morning, Commissioners, or, I'm sorry, good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Chad Chantilly, Fire Chief, Martin County Fire Rescue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Matt Resch, Fire Rescue Administrator. So this project represents our capital improvement plan for the replacement of fire rescue apparatus, as well as any major fire or medical equipment needs. Our apparatus replacement program is based off of 15 years of useful life, with 10 years as a frontline and five years as a backup truck. There are two major Cs attached that outline in more specific detail exactly the apparatus replacement program and the equipment replacement program. As you can see, we are seeking a $500,000 increase over last year's budget. It is important to note, however, that this is the first significant increase that we've had to ask for since 2019. For the past five years, we've been able to maintain the line at $1.6 million of avaloreum. And the reason we've been able to do that is by diversifying our revenue sources, more specifically with the Medicaid reimbursement programs that we participate in, that now net us about $750,000 annually, and that's helped us to offset those increases over the last five years. But however, price increases, more specifically in the last year, have gotten to the point where we can no longer absorb those costs. Just to provide a little perspective, for example, in the last year alone, our bunker gear, that's our structural firefighting gear that everybody wears, has gone up by $1,500 per set. In our capital improvement plan for next year, we have scheduled 100 sets that I need to replace, so that's $150,000 impact right there. On the fire truck side, a fire truck that we still haven't taken delivery of, that we purchased a little over a year ago at $630,000, is now well over $800,000. And in addition to that, the build times for fire trucks have gone from what used to be a one-year process to anywhere from two to even sometimes four-years process. So we're trying to move up. We have two trucks that are due for replacement in 2025, so we'd like to move those up to this next fiscal year, so that we don't fall behind in our replacement program. So those are the primary issues that we're facing, and those are the reasons for the increase, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions for fire rescue? Commissioner Smith?
May not be the time, but I'll ask. Hutchins Island Station? I'm sorry?
As in when it's going to be completed?
Well, hopefully it's complete. When are we going to be able to open it?
So the last update we received is they're moving into the punch-out phase now. The electrical was our issue in the past because of the breaker panel. We're moving into a position where it'd be a punch-out, but the, by the time they do the epoxies on the floor and do all the punch-out, what we're being told is July is the timeframe of us moving in, which, yeah, we're as disturbed as you are, because we're trying to get in before hurricane season, but there are just some things that are just out of our control. But that's what I'm being told right now is July.
So the epoxy on the floor's got to be removed and redone?
No, there are, apparently, what I'm, my understanding is they have to epoxy the floors yet, and because of climate control issues, because of the electrical issues that we've had, even the interior doors that were already put in have swelled, and you can't even close the doors. So they have to fix the doors. I don't think they kind of really shrink back. And then there's some paint issues as well, that either paint faded or chipped. There are some definite punch-out issues that apparently we're being told is going to take some time.
Are you going to do the punching?
No. Yes, no, whatever you want me to do.
Was it called a punch list? You called it a punch-out list.
Yeah.
I think that's a different list.
Yeah. It's a little more of an aggressive list to try to move this before July, but, uh...
So, so, okay, I understand everything you just said, but, so are they actively today working on the punch list?
I'll let him step up.
Good afternoon. Sean Donahue, Director of General Services. Yeah, the punch list actually starts on Monday. All the groups are going to get together, walk through the building, create the deficiencies list. That gets turned over to the contractor. They have about 60 days to rectify that list, and we go back through and make sure everything's done. There are opportunities to get in the building in advance of when that's done. Just depends on the severity of the punch list and the significance of some of the issues. We don't expect to find any, but a conservative estimate is July before we can actually get in. If we need to get in before hurricane season, I think we can make some arrangements on that, but by, by the contract and the codes, we don't take over insurance on the building until final, final checkout. So there's some, some issues we got to do.
So I assume you've met with the contractor, right?
Every week.
Every week. So I, I mean, it, whether there's 60 days or not, I mean, I think something's got to be communicated. They have got to finish before June, or, I mean, at least before we into the height of the hurricane season. I mean, that would be crazy, having that hanging out there until July.
I think we'll know a lot more after next week, once we create that list and see what the severity of it is. Some of these may take a little bit of time to solve, some of them may be real quick. And it's, we don't want to interrupt the operations of the department to move them in too soon and then have to move them out or change their facilities or anything like that. So I think we'll, we'll know more next week, once we create a list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for fire rescue?
If not, I'll move tentative approval.
Second.
That was a little more defined on who was second. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to accept, or, yeah, to accept or approve the fiscal year 2024 fire rescue CIP sheets. It was made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Up next is public buildings.
So why can't we go by the tab? Come on. I don't know.
Good afternoon again. Sean Donahue.
Commissioner Jenkins would like to know, why aren't you going by the tabs?
Yeah. It's because of the relationship. With fire.
Did you hear that response?
I, yeah. This happens like every year, honestly.
Yeah. I might call them up in order of the tabs.
Can I request that next year they put the tabs in order of what we're doing?
So we don't have to, most books you read from the front to the back, or in Asia from the back to the front, we zigzag through this book.
We have plans to correct that for next year, so I...
I might have to start calling them in that order.
If you would like, we can, we can work with you.
This will be the last one we call out of order.
Okay.
So after, where are we? Yeah, this is ridiculous.
Public Buildings.
After Public Buildings, then we're going to go back to...
Law Enforcement.
Law Enforcement.
It would also help if they were alphabetical.
It'd also be a thing? I mean, these are unique, you know, we're not asking for like...
We make arrangements for next year.
Alphabetical order, taking the, taking it in order of the thing. Now we're angry. Who's up next? Oh, Kevin.
Oh, no.
Kevin Landry. You and I spoke earlier, didn't we?
I don't recall. You were already angry.
I was even a better answer.
I do recall.
Going, taking the stairs.
Give it your best shot.
Good afternoon again. Sean Donahue, General Services Director.
And I'm Kevin Landry, General Services Deputy Director.
This is obviously a large request. There's significant building changes in this avaloreum impact, or that shows these avaloreum impacts. Some of it is continuation of projects, VAV replacements in the courthouse buildings. Some of it is new projects, saving up for, for future replacement of the courthouse office building and the, and the office building, the courthouse and the office building next door, the air, air handlers on top of the roof. There's about a $2.5 million future maintenance project that we need to save up for. Some, some projects are fire rescue projects, rehabilitation of old stations, replacement of old stations. Some projects are just continuation of maintenance of older buildings, such as the, the House of Refuge and the, the Health Department. And then there's some newer FAB requests, rekindling older FABs, such as the old roof FAB, which we now call Building Envelope FAB.
Can you explain to the folks paying attention at home what a FAB is, please?
Well, without getting into the acronym, it's, it's more basically a maintenance fund, a building maintenance fund or a building renewal fund, keeping the building systems healthy and exchanging, you know, building systems over time.
What does it stand for, FAB?
Fix Asset Replacement.
Yes, I know. I just, people at home, when, when government folks use acronyms, people at home can't follow along. Commissioner Smith?
So a FAB is, if you were to have a $2 million air conditioning system replacement, it would be the maintenance replacement of an existing piece of infrastructure on a building. So if you had a roof, you'd have a roof FAB, you'd have, you'd have an AC FAB.
In a sense, we, we tend to look at capital improvement projects for, for very large changes or maintenance items, such as the air handlers on the courthouse office buildings. That's an actual capital improvement plan budgeted item. FAB would be more of the unexpected or the, the general maintenance, you know, changing out the VAV boxes in a smaller building that wouldn't have such a significant impact.
Right, but it's a programmatic change. We know that that system is going to need replacement in four years.
In both senses, yeah.
And so we save ahead, we programmatically set up for that, so that when the time comes, we have enough money set aside to be able to do that specific project.
That's correct. Instead of taking a hit one single year for a $2.5 million project, we would save up for it over four years.
And, thank you. Thank you. So any questions I can answer?
Was that the end of it?
We have law enforcement, we can go forward with that, or if you want to...
Well, are we breaking? Yeah, let's break them down. Questions from my colleagues?
I just want an explanation on the building envelope.
Put your light on. Yeah, put your light on. Commissioner Hurd?
Um, where is the Public Works Compound sheet?
That is going to come in the Public Works Department's presentation.
There isn't one. Mine has, mine has no sheets underneath Public Works, but there's no sheets.
Yeah, you're right.
Dun, dun, dun.
That's prior year.
The last time the Public Works Facility sheet was brought forward to the board was when we acquired debt back in 2019. And so based on the estimates then, we had fully funded the project. And if we have any new information regarding bids coming in, we'll bring another CIP sheet at this time, but as of right now, it's supposed to be fully funded.
But it's not. So we need, we need a sheet for that.
No, it's not fully funded.
The only thing that we've bought is the land. Unless we're going to operate on the land, we need a sheet. Next thing is fire station bay door replacement program. It's replacing bay doors with bifold lateral opening doors. Two stations per year until all stations are retrofitted. That's $810,000 bucks a year for the next four, for the next three and a half years. Tell me about the necessity of that.
Again, for the record, Chad Chantilly, Martin County Fire Rescue Fire Chief. As far as the necessity of the bay doors, Commissioner, that has to do with the expediency of how we respond to calls. The current system that we have right now, the roll-up doors, they're slower doors, and they're not really weatherproof the way that we would expect them to be for today's standard. Just to illustrate the point, Station 23 on Cantor Highway right now, it's, we have the front bay doors that you see from Cantor Highway, they don't operate. This is a common occurrence. Station 30, Port Solerno, those bay doors, it's a common occurrence, they're always breaking down. Then we're at the mercy of these vendors to come there and replace these antiquated doors. So these newer doors, they have a, they, one, they have a better lifespan, they have a more efficiency as far as opening, and we have a quicker egress to go to the emergency calls, where we do save a lot of time responding. But to redesign these stations to fit those appropriate doors, it, it's going to have a cost associated with it, but these doors will be able to withstand the weather, and then also the security of the station as well. But this has been the nemesis of every station out there with these roll-up doors. They're always, always failing on a constant basis, and we always have issues with these vendors to fix them. These other bay doors are designed for the operation of fire rescue.
Okay, next question deals with Station 23. So we've got 4.1 million bucks to expand it. When was it built?
That, you know, I don't have an exact, 15, maybe 15 years ago. I really can't remember. I really can't recall the exact time we did it, but it was approximately 15 years ago.
And it now needs to be expanded to the tune of $4.1 million?
Yes, ma'am. So, what we're doing with that station is, in lieu of building new stations, we're doing addition to current stations. Because we have so many trucks running out of these stations, it's more cost-effective for us to actually expand the current existing station, and then we can put additional trucks and personnel. Right now, we have reached capacity of the people in the station. So, if we can expand the bay, bring in the equipment, and then expand the bunk rooms to bring in the people, then that prevents us from building a $13 million fire station.
As I recall, there were wetland issues on the site when it was built in the first place?
Ma'am, that was the old property that was originally given to us from the developer. That was a wetland site that we couldn't develop on, and now we're on the current site where we were able to develop on.
Okay. Next question is Fire Station 22 relocation. Design and construction of a 10,500-square-foot station on Bridge Road near I-95. Who's paying for that?
So, that would be tax dollars that pays for that. As far as the reason for the fire station, just to understand, we're talking about Tropical Farms. This station was built many, many, many years ago. It's in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So, responding from that, from that station in that neighborhood is not the wisest place to have a fire station. However, we had an opportunity. If we can take that station and relocate it, push it a little bit south, what we're able to do is capture Western Hope Sound, and we're able to capture a lot more of, a little bit more western in Martin County, and still service the same area that Tropical Farms does, but we're able to do it in a more controlled and safe environment. So, that's why if we relocate the station, we're not building an additional station, we're just taking that station and transplanting that, and transplanting to a better location.
Except that the Tropical Farm Station is, is inside the urban service boundary, inside the primary urban service boundary.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, what you're talking about is wholly outside of this primary or secondary. It was by I-95 and Bridge Road, it is.
We're talking about two different stations, ma'am. We're talking about Station 22. That's not accurate.
Okay, so tell me where Bridge Road near I-95 is.
Okay, so Bridge Road and I-95?
What the CIP sheet says.
Okay. All right, so we have two, there's two areas that we're looking for. We don't have a spot yet to move it out. We don't, we don't have property that's secured. We're just looking at different areas. So, I don't have a piece of property right now.
Okay, so you're not, are you looking at a property outside the urban service boundary?
I'm looking at property, whatever's available that serves the community to the best of our ability. I don't control where we have the property. I give ideas of where to put the station for the best location, but I don't have a secured piece of property for you right now, so I can't tell you exactly where it's going to be.
Okay.
What I can tell you is, if we do move it in the correct spot, we can service Western Hope Sound as well as Tropical Farms.
Well, that has to be a consideration, because there aren't urban service boundary, urban services available in the, in the geographic location to which you refer. Similarly, Western Palm City Fire Station, it looks to me like on the CIP sheet that it's outside the urban boundary also.
So, we, again, we don't have secured property for that as well, but what we're trying to do is capture Western Palm City. If I had something that was concrete, and I can tell you we're building, then I can tell you if we're in the service boundary or not. I just can't do that today. What I can tell you is, we need to build a fire station in Western Palm City, one, to service Western Palm City because of the call load, and two, to kind of close the distance out further west in Martin County about the response times that we have out there to the old Station 28 area. So, it kind of serves both purposes and the new development, and I may mess the name up because it changes so much, but Newfield, it will also capture that new development, which is going to have a tremendous impact on the county as well.
Well, is the site being, is, is the site going to be on Newfield?
Ma'am, I don't have secured property. I've been told Newfield, I've been told by the landfill, I've been told many different places, but I have not put my feet on a ground that says this is where the next fire station is going. Right now, it's all just talk.
Who makes the determination about the locations of the fire stations? Because I'm hearing that there are two proposals for fire stations now that are wholly outside the urban service boundary in order to serve development inside the urban service boundary. So, who makes that determination?
Ultimately, the Board will make the determination on, on the, on the location on any property acquisition that's necessary for it. But just remember to keep in mind that Fire Rescue has a level of service for both urban boundary, which is a shorter timeframe, eight minutes or so, I think.
Six and a half minutes.
Six and a half minutes, and then, and the rural properties, you also have a, a response time, which is a longer period of time, 20...
Up to 20 minutes.
20 minutes. So, you still have units that are in the urban boundary that are responding to the rural areas. And as people use roads and other things, there are still call loads, and that take people away. So, that ultimately, the, the location, the optimum location for these fire stations that serve the six and a half minute response time in the urban area and the 20-minute response time, you still, that doesn't mean the station optimally will be in the urban boundary. And so, that's the models that they're looking at. But ultimately, that decision, in terms of the location of that, of that station, will be brought to you in terms of what is the, in predicting on how we can service both the urban area and the timeframes we predicted, and the rural area without, because as the rural area takes more call load, it takes respondents from the urban area out there. They have to backfill them from other stations. So, it is a, you know, you know, it, it, there is some complications in, in that, and also predicting, you know, how things go. They're looking simply at call loads where they're happening and how we can respond by having a facility that can serve both. But ultimately, the goal is to still, the requirement is to keep that six and a half minute response time fully within the urban area, and that 20-minute response time, what's in the rural areas. We have some residents in the rural areas that are concerned that we're not meeting the response times and that, in some of the western areas, and, and they're right, there are, there is increased accident history and other call leads that are, that are happening out there that we just need to prepare for.
Is there currently a requirement that, that fire stations be constructed inside the urban service boundary where urban services are available and programs are available?
Our requirement is to provide the level of service that I described in terms of the building location. We do have areas, urban enclaves outside the boundary, such as Agtech, that would be a potential location that would still service both requirements in terms of allowing a actual physical location. We've had fire stations outside the urban boundary. In fact, the one on 714 that we closed some years ago is an example of one that had been existence outside for a long time. But I can't answer your specific question as if there's a prohibition in, in the comp plan. I will have to research that and get back to you.
Those are my questions. Thank you. To follow up on what Mr. Donaldson said, I agree that fire station location is more about this level of service than if it's in or out. If you live out on Fox Brown, or as Indian Town develops, you know, the conversation a couple of years ago about potentially privatizing Indian Town Fire Rescue with the Village, it sort of shined a light again on, on the, how important the Indian Town Fire Station is, but as Indian Town, through no issues of ours, continues to grow, then the western Martin County, western Palm City, those folks pay taxes and live here just as, and are entitled to that level of service. So, if it has to be a station outside of the urban service boundary, I don't necessarily see that as, you know, piercing the, it's not the only reason that development would head that way. I think that we should offer a legitimate level of service, no matter where our residents live in the county, and if putting one that by, I remember there's also talk about in the front of Stuart Weston Cobblestone, that they would like to have it. And as things go further west, whether it's industrial or residential or agricultural, they're entitled to this level of service. Commissioner Smith?
But, Mr. Donaldson, I guess the answer really to the, to the question is, you or we have not yet been delivered sites to pick from, or we have not chosen anything inside or outside for those two stations.
That's correct. The, the, the planning portion of this document is just giving you a heads up that Fire Rescue has identified two stations that need to consider possible relocation or an additional site.
And that's based on level of service, and that's it. That's correct. Great, thank you.
Okay, with that, why don't you, do, do we need to break these down? Or do you want to hear them all?
That's all that's in public, in, in my agenda, that's the extent of Public Buildings.
Correct, but you're going to do Law Enforcement as a separate?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we need to approve Public Buildings?
Yes.
I will move approval of Public Buildings, tentative approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Heatherington to move tentative approval of the FY24 Public Building CIP sheets, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. Our next is Law Enforcement.
Similar to Public Buildings, this budget contains continuation of some existing projects. It does start saving for some future projects. Some examples of the future projects are the logistics center and the future fire and range relocation. Some examples of the continuation of existing projects are the jail pod renovations. We found some new items that we need to tackle during those renovations, so we added a little bit more money in that far, or that specific CIP sheet. The rest of them, or, like I said, there's some minor, minor projects, replacing our generator, but really, a lot of it's just saving up money for future projects.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Hurd. So, relative to the Sheriff's Department, I assume all of us were invited to take a tour of the jail system? And have, have been any discussions yet for an additional pod as to where and how that's going to happen, and who's going to fund it, and that kind of stuff?
I, I can, it is an area that we're going to have to bring back to talk about in more detail. It's not something that the Sheriff has asked us to add in the CIP for next year. It'll be a multi-year funding project. I don't know if it's something at this point in time, whether this is a, a three-year need or a five-year need. So, once we get that nailed down, I think obviously that will, because it's a, what we're talking about is a very expensive...
And the only reason I asked the question was, if it is a three or five, given the estimates I heard, it's going to take that long to amass that kind of revenue. So, I, I just, it might be worthy of a conversation with him, not that everybody hasn't, but if it's a foregone conclusion that there's a new pod needed and it's going to be five years from now or four years, I, the sense I got it was, they needed it this year, today, tomorrow. So, you know, if, if it's the amount of money that they're talking about, I don't know where, you know, I, I don't know why we wouldn't at least be considering a placeholder in here somewhere.
I, I think we can add it into it, but I would suggest it would be something we bring back as a separate agenda item, and then we could add it to the, as a, at least as a planning sheet. I don't know that we could, and we'll see how the budget goes, if we can put anything towards it, just whether or not...
We may not be able to, Don, but it's not going to get better next year, and it won't get better the following year with the amount of money that's required to build something like that. And then the question is, is that something we go to the legislature with for additional funding and so on? And if it's not in our CIP, it's kind of hard to ask for something if we don't recognize the need.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Or he can ask for, rather.
Please continue.
I didn't have anything else.
That's it?
I had to answer some questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Heatherington?
The firearms training facility, just the first I've heard or seen anything about it on the sheet, and it's a whopping $10 million. And it says to replace potentially, I mean, I certainly recognize the need for a firearms training facility, but it's, it's kind of insinuating that there could be potential impacts from a development, so potentially, it needs to be moved, and we're putting a couple million dollars a year for that. That seems a little excessive.
It is a replacement. Yes, yes, ma'am. It's a replacement of, of the existing facility, which is at the southern, southwestern corner of the Newfield.
Isn't it by the landfill?
Yeah. It's not that old.
Southwest corner of Newfield, though.
We cut a ribbon out there not that long ago.
I just, I just don't, I don't, I don't understand the need if there's no impact.
Shooting, oh, there will be.
And how, I mean, 10, what, what's necessary in, in a firearms training facility? Is it indoor facility, or is it outdoor facility like we have now?
It is an outdoor facility. It would require the purchase of land somewhere further west, away from residential development. It would be, you know, securing the land, creating the berms, building the houses, bringing the electric out. So, it becomes a significant investment over time.
We can land swap.
I mean...
How many acres is it on currently?
Do you know, stop your head?
No, I don't.
Yeah, that's going to have to be, like you were talking about the jail pod, I think the shooting firearms training facility will have to have its own conversation. Anything, those big $10 million items, I mean, if we were going to focus our attention on something like that, I mean, 26, 23,000 for the library, 10 million for a replacement of a relatively new facility.
A berm.
That's outdoors. I know that there's some technical criteria involved. I remember when we built that one with John Ski, that it turned into a whole issue, but I'd rather see us address individual items like that than ask every department to take a haircut. But, it's a conversation we can have in the future.
One more. The public safety dispatch, does that include Fire Rescue dispatch, or that, that is only the Sheriff's Office dispatch?
This is the 9/11 dispatch. It's original construction to the building, so...
So, it's, it is the...
Both.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, so are we going to leave this firearms training facility in the CIP?
I was just going to say the same thing. If we tentatively approve it, then it's, we tentatively have approved it. Versus having a separate conversation. Can we slice it out?
Currently, this year, we're not, they're not asking for anything for this FY24 budget, but for next year, there is an ask on the sheet.
Then they should come back next year.
But if it's a zero...
Commissioner Smith?
So, we are tentatively approving items today. We're not finalizing approval of the budget today. We will see this three more times, I think, Stephanie, you told us earlier. So, if we're going to get presentations on the pod, if we're going to get a presentation on the shooting range, there's a lot of time between now and September before we start moving into final approvals. I, I would, I would leave it for now, and...
Well, I think our comments will sort of cause at least some further conversation from the folks that created the sheet.
And you're approving, tentatively approving a zero, so...
No, you're tentatively approving almost $1.5 million in design.
Yes.
In '24.
Oh. Okay.
I'd slice it out. At least so we can have a conversation about it, otherwise, we might as well just put a big rubber stamp on the cover of this book.
But I wouldn't pull this item until the Sheriff has the opportunity to come share with us his thoughts. I just wouldn't do that to him.
You can ask for it during the budget.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll move tentative approval, given that there's plenty enough time to remove the sheet or to have the Sheriff come and talk to us, whether it's budget or freestanding agenda items that want to talk about the pod and the shooting range.
Would you phrase your motion in such a way that said tentative approval of this item requiring Mr. Donaldson to arrange an opportunity for us to hear from the Sheriff?
Sure. Pending a subsequent, it's still tentative, so it's, like adding pending is kind of strange because it's still tentative, but pending an agenda item to discuss both pod and shooting range.
Okay. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion as stated by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
We did library, so now we're going to parks. We did library, so now we're going to parks. Didn't really accomplish much because that's what the list said anyway.
Good afternoon. Kevin Abate, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. Today presenting the Parks Fiscal Year '24 CIP sheet. And we'll tell you briefly about some of the things that we're asking for for '24 and what has changed. The first thing is our fixed asset replacement budget. We have not had an increase in our fixed asset replacement budget since fiscal year 2018. We're asking for an increase of $750,000 for the budget. What we've, what we're finding out of the last many budget cycles, especially since COVID and the high use of our parks is all of our assets, our deferred maintenance backlog is growing at a pace much faster than our actual budget. We're also asking to, a small increase in our parks fiber security and Wi-Fi camera replacement program. And also at the FAB program, we're going to be using, actually, we're going to be increasing $100,000 of our fixed asset replacement budget at Indian Riverside Park, a very, probably one of our busiest parks other than Sandspit Park, where we continue to see a lot of the assets deteriorate over time. It's currently funded right now, I think at 100, 150,000, but we've already exceeded that budget already this year. And additionally, we're looking at Indian Riverside Park, construction of the boardwalk for next year. We're going to be doing some design work now, and that's the final phase of work at Indian Riverside Park. We're also looking at using impact fees and district funds for the, starting the design of the Sandtune Cafe at Jensen Beach. And of course, we've asked for additional funding to help complete the final plan, program plan for Wojcik Park. Right now, we're currently working with the league on the current budget with ARPA funds, but we have found that the request, the board request to work with the league and all the fencing and various projects is approaching 1.2 million. And we need some additional funding to do some additional programming at the park. And then finally, a request, which is on a board goals, is to install a concrete foundation and bleachers for the arena at Timer Powers Park. Have any questions that you may have on any of these sheets? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hurd?
How many times a year would be, are bleachers used at Timer Powers Park?
Well, we currently have the two sets of bleachers that are used for, of course, the Roto uses them, and we have other programs that, more spectator-driven programs like dressage and different programs, dog shows that are not as, maybe, maybe 10 times a year the current set of bleachers that we have. For the, on week for weekend activities, but they're used very passively. I mean, they're not completely full all the time, but they're used often. Especially we have a lot of daily riding out there where parents are sitting around watching programs, so they are used. So the bleachers we have now are in full use.
But you're asking for an additional million bucks to put in more concrete and more bleachers for a facility that's not widely used?
It's not widely used because it doesn't have bleachers.
I would agree. Since that used to be in my district before it was stolen, whatever they want to call it, redistrict, there was a lot of capacity for that facility that could be used, and one of the biggest knocks was the fact that there were no bleachers there. We have a couple of sets within the, within the organization that you could move over on occasion. But if you were going to plan an event there, which, you know, in Western Palm City with the things that Mr. Abate said, all of the different equestrian dogs and the rest of it, you can't do because if you're a site selector, you go out there, you see there's no bleachers. We have two or three mobile sets that we can use there if they are available to be used there. Otherwise, you'd have to rent them, and they're a fortune to rent. I think that, yes, Commissioner Hurd's point is well taken that a million dollars for bleachers out there, but I think it's not so much that you needed the million dollars for bleachers to do what you're doing. It's by spending a million dollars on the bleachers, you open up the possibility of really maximizing that multimillion dollar facility. You're sort of tying its hands behind its back by not having the seating capacity.
And it was designed to expand many, many years ago. We just ran out of money for the project. We actually had an opportunity down the road, an enterprise fund opportunity that was pulled.
I was going to pay for the whole thing, but I didn't have it in my district anymore. Unless you want to give it back?
Going to Wojcik Park, it is one of the busiest parks in Martin County, one of the best-located parks in the county. It's smack dab in the middle of a very, very.
Working class.
Jubilant neighborhood, you know, it's used by, by the neighbors all over the place every day. Every time I go by Wojcik Park, which is nearly every day, it's full of kids playing, it's full of adults playing. So it's, it's a wonderful, big 12-acre asset. So how many footsall fields are being added? Because that's where soccer is played, and that is the sport of demand in this neighborhood.
So our plan right now is, we are addressing the local league requests. So we went out there, did a site visit. We're currently looking at, you know, the batting cages, the dugouts. There's a number of things in the park that need to be addressed. We're going to, we are working with a consultant to, we're going to actually lower their scope down, save some money. And the one and a half, two acres of property where we can do, add additional footsall courts are being looked at. I don't know how many we're going to grab out of that property, but I would think that we would maximize it since the sport is very, very popular.
Okay, and, and lastly, I visited the Sandspit Park last week with the Kevins. And so we, so, so Sandspit Park is perhaps the most utilized park in the county with good reason. It has wonderful water access. Its water access makes it particularly vulnerable to bad weather. And it has been the victim of bad weather events in the last couple of years. So that the public is now being denied access to the water. The boardwalk is closed off, fenced off, the fishing piers are closed off, fenced off, they're unsafe. We think that we may get FEMA funding reimbursement in order to rebuild these facilities. We think we may get insurance money to rebuild these facilities. I think that the taxpayers deserve better. I don't think we can wait on redoing these, these facilities. I think that we need to design and plan and construct sustainable fishing piers and a boardwalk now, rather than waiting. I think it's just like, just like biting the bullet with the, with the Sandspit boat ramps. That wasn't, that wasn't a pleasure, but it was necessary because it's such a well-utilized facility, and it's an asset that we just can't continue denying our public access to. I think we will get reimbursed. I think we will get the money for them. But even if we, we can't count on it, we can't wait for it.
Commissioner Smith?
And no replacing with wood.
Do you want to say something first or no?
Well, I'm inviting all board members out to, Commissioner Heatherington, I will meet after today's meeting to, we'd talk about the importance of Sandspit Park and the popularity. Mr. Donaldson and I talked yesterday about the park, and obviously, you're correct. The park is, is probably one of the busiest parks, or if not the busiest park, in the county, and very popular, and obviously very subject to weather conditions, and it will always continue to do that. So we believe in sustainable approaches. I think the most important thing right now, based on what I've heard, is that we need to reopen the piers and these docks as soon as possible, and then start designing a plan for sustainable Sandspit. And, you know, and come back to the board, you know, get some, we'll need design money to do that, but really have that approach. It'll take some time. When we did the boat ramp permitting, it took us two years for Sandspit Park boat ramp, going through DEP. It is quite the process going through all the permitting with the Army Corps. We believe this will be much the same because of the land leases, submerged land leases involved with piers and docks and all the sustainable approaches. So I think that using the insurance proceeds to get, to get open to the public. I don't like parks being fenced and closed and coned. I like to get it open, if we can, quick as possible. Mr. Corwin is working on that now with, with insurance. And then, and then look at a long-term vibrant program for a modernized Sandspit Park.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So my visit with the Kevins, that's so funny, the Kevins, was very similar, just to, just to add on to it a little bit. You know, the dock at Indian Riverside Park has been there for probably 40-plus years from when FIT was there. I don't know that we've ever lost the dock. And I know it's not a direct shot to the inlet, but we get some hellacious storms out there that beat the heck out of everything. You look at the, the, the capacity of the infrastructure that is that dock versus what Sandspit has, it's twice as robust in engineering and design as is Sandspit. So if we're going to replace, my suggestion to, to the Parks Department was that, you know, if we only can do one at a time, or we can build one, engineer the next one, permit the next, whatever it takes, but build them so that they're robust enough to withstand a major hurricane that other docks that we have do. And I just, because if you, if you replace what's there, you're going to get the same result in the next big storm that we get, and we'll be having the same conversation. I'd rather do it once to have it last for 20 or 30 years than every seven to eight years go out there and say, what are we going to do this year? So that was my input.
Thank you. Mr. Donaldson?
So this is just an example of what happens after a storm, and we look at how we pay for things. And, you know, it's, we have your reserve funds, and then we have a natural disaster fund since it was declared disaster. And so I did not allow all departments to immediately rebuild without having some knowledge of if we were going to get reimbursed. And given Ian's devastation on the West Coast, getting any consistence from FEMA has been, been slow. And there's two pieces of it. One is I know that we can do the repair to original condition, and whether it's insurance or make the claim to FEMA, which by the way, we probably won't see that money for, on average, two years right now, even if we do the work. And so, and so we've been going through the process just trying to prioritize it. Out of all the Ian and damages that we sustained here and the other hurricane, is, is putting those in order without jeopardizing your, your reserve funds to the point that we have a problem next year. So one of the challenges I gave the departments, if it's critical for your operation right now, if you can fund it out of your FAB, then we would reimburse your FAB. Obviously, as these projects add up, they exceed what they can take out of other projects. And in Kevin's case, he's already allocated his FAB six times over, more than he has on a number of projects. So there's no doubt that we could go and repair it to original condition and, and get at least some insurance or reimbursement from it. It may not come this year. We can also rebuild it to a new standard and only get the money that would have paid for the reimbursement costs. So our, I think, this one may require some more conversation beyond today on, on how we want to see Sandspit. I believe there's, everybody wants to see some portion of it or all of it rebuilt. And if we rebuild it, let's build it so it isn't, is vulnerable. And I've just simply been looking for it, how much of someone else's money we can use to, to accomplish that goal. And so the challenge has been, it's not been expedient. And getting FEMA to approve a betterment, the insurance doesn't care. They're just going to pay for whatever the damage that we had insurance for. And unfortunately, they don't pay, pay that soon. So my, my only, I think if we move forward quickly with Sandspit, just keep in mind that we may have to take some more out of reserves, knowing that you may not be able to fill those reserves up for two years fully. Or if we refill them immediately with this next budget, it kind of goes into the earlier conversation of what kind of increase in our tax rate to do to fill it up, even though we may get the money in the future. So that's, I don't want to overcomplicate the conversation, but I think it's a good example of what happens from a storm. And Sandspit's a very important one. There's another one at Indian Riverside Park that's right next to a kind of a little seawall we didn't replace that's kind of vulnerable that we knew we could, but we think we can do some emergency repairs there. That won't be as expensive, but there's other little pockets around the parks has. Twin Rivers Park, I think, has another area that, that we need to address. And some of these may be patches, you know, repair patch. And some of them, as you've described, Sandspit should be rebuilt in a way that's, that it's obvious that we're building for the future as opposed to just a patch. So I think we'll come back with some ideas with you on this one. And it may involve taking some funds from this year in order to get it moving in a timeframe that you all have expressed today.
Commissioner Heatherington?
So I don't, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, we prioritized Sandspit, and then we front-loaded the design of the permitting and for all the other boat ramps? How are we doing, since it sounds like it takes a while for the permitting on the other boat ramps in the county?
The CIP sheet for boat ramps, you'll see that they are all in some sort of design and permitting phase, so we just.
Make that larger.
So our next boat ramp in the funding cycle for us is actually going to be Charlie Layton Park. So, so, but they all have ties to permitting, so, and design. They're all fully funded for it. So we realize that it looks like it's going to be a two-year cycle. Like for this year, for Layton Park, for '24, we would put a half a million in the budget. And then hopefully in '25, we would construct, we have our permits in '25. And then we would do the same for the subsequent boat ramps, is to design for two years and build for two, well, design and build for two years, and fund, build funding cycles. So that way, we're not asking for a million dollars now to spend in two years. We did a half million, half million. Now, some of these, we believe that most of these boat ramps that are identified here today, like JNS Fish Camp, will be nowhere near that cost. But things are getting more expensive, as you know, so we'll just play it by ear. And obviously, in '26, '27, it could be a lot less or a lot more. It really depends on the complexities of these ramps and what we find, whether they're a full replacement or a minor repair. But we are designing all these ramps for resiliency purposes. We want them to be sustainable over the long term for like Sandspit for King Tides and all those weather events that they've been experiencing for many years. So, and we start, we had a pre-construction meeting for Sandspit today, and so we start moving next week.
Great.
One boat ramp will remain open at all times at Sandspit Park.
Good. That was my last question.
Thank you. Please continue. Or is that it?
Yeah, that was, I didn't, went over just kind of the overview of each sheet, so.
Tentative approval for parks. Second.
Wow.
And.
Yes?
I love that you used that photo. It's just a shame that that palm is gone.
Lives on in this photograph. Memories.
It was the one thing in that contract, do not remove the palm.
And they did?
Yes.
Sorry.
Don Donaldson.
Your mic. Sorry, that picture does illustrate a really good project in terms of resiliency. It was the wall we built to protect the mansion from falling in. And it's exceedingly strong for hurricanes and high weather events, and it also blends really well with the landscape. So if you ever get a chance to go back behind the mansion and look at the wall that we constructed there that Public Works oversaw, they did a really good job. Also protects an Indian midden, had a lot of really challenges, but they did, it's, I thought it came out architecturally really nice, and it also blended well with the, with the, with the upland landscape.
They did a great job. I mean, the project itself was fantastic. Just the tree was a bummer.
And another one. That being said, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to tentatively accept the fiscal year '24 Parks CIP sheets. year twenty four Parks CIP sheets, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. Oh, no, Commissioner Jenkins, a slow second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next one is public buildings. Did we do that already?
Yes.
Next one after that is Public Works.
We're going to yellow tabs.
Now, we have Public Works.
Are we going to coastal?
Coastal.
Oh, coastal is oh, those are sub tabs. Coastal, we're going to go coastal.
Coastal.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Where is he? Oh, not it's just the upper, upper level.
Yes.
It's just the suit and ties, even though, let the record show, Kevin Abate did not have a tie on.
Hmm. I saw that.
Okay, I'll introduce us. I'm George Ammon, Public Works Deputy Director.
Jim Gordon, Public Works Director. And over there, we have Lisa Wixer, our County Engineer. Behind me, we have Kylie Yanchula, the Public Works Administrator, and Jessica Garland with our coastal program.
New haircut, very nice.
So this is going to be a tag team approach. We're going to split up some of these subsections. First and foremost, just where my department had, I just want to thank the staff over this past year. You know, we've had a lot of increased costs due to inflation, as everyone's aware, and staff has worked very hard and and efficient with our budgets. And, you know, I'm proud of the fact that we have a realized five year work plan in all of our our sections of the CIP. And this year, we tasked staff with updating their project budgets and and real real time costs over the next five years. So you're going to see in the CIP, you see a reflection of some projects having to get moved out and a lot of phasing of some other projects. And I also want to just thank, you know, a lot of the federal and state agencies for their commitment to our programs. They've stepped up to the plate and added a lot of of grant funding, particularly the core DEP with their resilience program and and Florida Department of Transportation. They've supplemented a lot of grant funds for projects that have been some projects have been double the budget, and they've stepped up to the plate. So we just we just can't thank them enough. First and foremost, we have coastal. What's changed? We had a just a slight decrease in ad valorem impact. The decrease was for our resilient Martin program. We've really we launched our comprehensive database and analysis. We've established our program that, you know, a lot the state is really working hard in their planning grants section to get a lot of the other counties and agencies up to up to speed with their resilient Florida program. And we've already been there, and we're we've moved on to a lot of implementation grants. So we don't need as much funding. We're just going to be updating our analysis and modeling on an annual basis. Our level of funding for the St. Lucie Inlet and our beach and shoreline renourishment and artificial reef programs have stayed level. And that concludes coastal. Any questions?
Tentative approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hurt.
St. Lucie Inlet Management Plan has six point six million and twenty, let's see, a million in twenty four, six point six million in twenty five, and eleven point five million in twenty six. Can you tell me what those projects are?
Yeah, so we had a due to the hurricanes, we had extensive erosion out on the beaches. So we're going to have to do a dredge sooner than expected of the impoundment basin. So the first one will go over toward Bathtub Beach. Another project that we have coming out of this is the the jetty that's going to happen on the south side of the inlet. We're going to rebuild that jetty. Right now, it's failed in several locations on the north end of Jupiter Island. So we want to build that back partnering with the Army Corps to be wider and taller.
Is that in twenty five or twenty six?
Well, it really depends on when the permitting is completed. We we are probably going to flip flop the inlet dredge and the jetty because of permitting that has to occur. So the inlet will probably occur first with the jetty occurring second, really dependent on when the permits come through. The jetty is a little bit more unique of a permitting process than the inlet, which is usually pretty quick.
Tentatively, we're scheduled for the inlet for March of twenty twenty four and the jetty June of twenty twenty five.
Okay. Manatee Pocket mooring field, what's the holdup?
We are moving along while the anchors and the anchors have been installed for all the the moorings. We're waiting on installing the buoys until all three phases are complete. And the dock construction, we are under contract. They're actually manufacturing the floating docks as we speak, and we're looking for the contractor to mobilize in early June to start construction on the dock, the dinghy dock system. We are still currently in negotiations for the Phase Three, which is the the management of the facility. So we're still under the cone of silence.
Okay. And also, the Port Salerno commercial fishing docks, why is that in our CIP? Why is that our responsibility?
So the lease for the commercial fishing docks is through the county?
The under submerged land lease.
The submerged land lease, yes. And we lease the property to them. So the sheet is here. It does open up the possibility for grants to be able to working waterfront grants by having it in our CIP. But the intent of that is that you can see there's no county funding on the sheet. So it's there as a need for the community, but there isn't any local funding associated with it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington, for temporary approval of the coastal fiscal year twenty twenty four CIP sheets. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next one is ecosystem management.
Okay, so what's new in ecosystems is we're adding a channel enhancement program and some new BMP project, best management projects for high performance upflow filter systems and some of our STAs, particularly downstream and at the outfall locations of STAs for added water quality benefits. So you'll see that reflected in our in the CIP for design projects as well as funding for Map Creek STA or East Fort Creek. We have a Phase Two that has been designed. We've we've obtained some grants. Phase Two is going to be a linear lake, if you will, that's slightly downstream of the current twenty acre STA that we're building. And we're also getting started on the land and design land acquisition and design for the Kitchen Creek Eastern Flowway. Those are just some of the highlighted projects. What's changed is we've requested a hundred thousand for our environmentally sensitive lands program, just to keep up. We've been adding trails and, you know, infrastructure improvements to a lot of our FCT properties. And we it's it's, you know, we've stayed level for a while, and and just to keep up, we need some additional funding. And we've also added a hundred thousand for our TMDB TMDL and BMAP compliance projects. A lot of it's matching grants for our our projects for improved water quality in our estuaries.
So part thirty one oh two.
Any questions?
Yes. Commissioner Hurt has some.
Yeah, I'm looking at Atlantic Ridge East Access, which I approve of, but is will there be ATV access?
No, there isn't any intent to have all train vehicles back in the Atlantic Ridge Park.
Okay, there's going to be parking spaces, six parking spaces. You don't think that ATVs will take advantage of it?
So the state park will know. So the intent is that it's non-motorized vehicles, just like any of our other environmentally sensitive lands.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Lieutenant of approval.
Second.
I know. Slipping.
We have a motion for a tentative approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty four ecosystem CIP sheet by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next one is public transportation.
So our transit sheets are the same sheets that you've seen for several years. We've got the rolling stock sheet, which is for replacement buses. And then the second sheet, which isn't funded, is for the operations and maintenance facility. Those are the for the rolling stock, there is funding there, and that's to replace the buses. And this year, you just approved a grant today, actually, to offset some of the cost to replace with a medium duty bus. So we're going to for our smaller routes, the interconnected routes, we're going to go with a bus that's more similar to what they use up in Indian River County, which is just one step smaller than the Gillig's that we're using now. That wouldn't be for the main line down US one, but it would be the for the the shorter route. So just something we're experimenting with. But that's what that CIP sheet will will cover. Any questions on transit?
Commissioner Smith has one.
The the only and I understand why you're doing it. One of the reasons, I think, why we went to the Gillig Gillig model or design was it looks like a bus. When we when we had the older bus things, they looked like like an assisted living bus. And there was a lot of huh? There was a there was a fair amount of, I wouldn't say pushback, but resilience to people wanting to get on that style of a bus. And so there was a there was a concerted strategy to go in this direction versus reverse. I understand if maintenance and the amount of people riding it and the size is more practical in a shorter route or a tighter confinement, but at least there was that was at least part of the strategy why we went this direction.
And I agree with you. So you're you're speaking of cutaway buses, which are the light duty buses. There's a grade that's in between the two, which is the medium duty, which is still a bus. It's still it's just slightly smaller, and it's not built quite as heavy. You don't need the suspension that you have in the Gillig. The, you know, just tires alone are a lot cheaper. So the but I agree with you. It's not going to be a cutaway. We're not going all the way back to where we were when Marty first started.
It'll be the bus that we saw at the MPO the other day that Indian River County is using? I think that was the picture they used in their illustration for
Yes, yeah, it's that exact bus, yes.
It's still moving that direction, though. I just
We're trying to be as efficient as we can. And then the bus the bus routes that don't have the a ton of ridership, we want to, you know, put the right vehicle in the right spot.
I would agree with Commissioner Smith that there is a marketing advantage to making the people that are not familiar. I was out of office when you switched over from what I call the rental car vans to an actual bus. And, you know, having not been tuned in for those years that I was out, I was pleasantly surprised to see the actual bus that people would expect would be the look of a transit system. Of course, none of us in Palm City know what the bus looks like, because there are no buses in Palm City.
That would be a great spot for one of the medium duty buses, because
The rental car van? You know, many people get on thinking they're going to Avis, and then they realize they're not. I want a bus in Palm City for our people. Commissioner Hurt, what say you?
I'm looking at pavement marking maintenance. This was a a big topic several years ago. Is this there's fifty thousand bucks a year in it. Is that enough?
That's in roads.
It's under our road sheet.
You're jumping ahead.
Oh, well, it says pavement marking.
No, you're jumping ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were
That's okay.
I am jumping ahead.
Jumping ahead.
I already approved the last one.
Prepared for her mind, in her mind.
Getting ready.
I've moved tentative approval of the Transit CIP with with mention of the
Concern.
Concern.
We'll continue the dialogue.
Which means he's going to do whatever he wants.
No.
Right.
Okay, with that in mind, we have a motion by
A bus.
We get nothing. Still pulling people around in a horse drawn wagon. Anyway, oh, you got a four o'clock?
It doesn't matter, but dragging this out here.
Sorry for you to have to put the full day in. Anyway, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith for tentative approval of the fiscal twenty twenty four Transit CIP, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins, who's obviously in a rush to go somewhere else. That being said, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Come on, Commissioner Hurt was already on that.
I was going to vote no on that, but I don't want to. Roads. Commissioner Hurt, do you have anything to add? No.
Haven markings.
Haven markings, which is Stacy Heatherington's big thing. Please
Okay.
Enlighten us.
The the roads program has stayed level with our maintenance projects, particularly resurfacing, traffic safety measures, traffic signal, maintenance, intersection improvements, as well as our bridge program. We've and annual commitments. We some projects to highlight are we are scheduled to replace the South County Line Road Bridge. We are ninety percent complete with design. We've made it to the Senate budget for a state appropriation, so that could help provide some funding relief for us. We've also we've, like I mentioned before, we've split up some of the neighborhood projects as well and phasing out, like we just wanted to bring to the attention, like a Rocky Point. There's also a joint septic to sewer project going on. So we're going to be looking to start early in some of the areas that already have sewer. And it helps relieve a lot of the budget so we can kind of split up, and it won't be as as big of a a nut for for the budget. And we also have several resurfacing projects, such as Martin Highway out west, that's scheduled to be resurfaced from Fox Brown Road all the way to seven ten. And what's changed? We've requested an increase in a hundred thousand for traffic signals and streetlights rehabilitations. It's more particular, we've had a a maintenance sheet for traffic signals, but we've added streetlights. We've added, you know, we need to provide funding for maintenance and replacements. We do get insurance, but the insurance reimbursements aren't nearly enough to keep up, and we wanted to add some funding for the streetlight program. And we also have a thirty thousand dollar increase for Fire MSTU for our traffic signal preemption program that our traffic division has worked very well with our fire rescue department in implementing that program.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurt has a question on utilities?
We'll be happy to talk about striping.
Yeah, are we catching up?
Yeah, we have our staff here and Lisa could, you know, Lisa's here to talk about our 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 traffic program. But we have staff that it's been using the striping machine, and we're utilizing contracted services to keep up with the program. And we're also implementing striping, obviously, with our resurfacing projects.
I wonder what that was all over your shoes now we know. You're actually working the striping machine. Good for you.
The the fifty thousand dollars it's programmed, I'm Lisa Wixer, I'm the County Engineer, that that fifty thousand dollars is for the in-house work that we're doing. We did buy some equipment, and we are actively refreshing stop bars, crosswalks, mainly just the smaller things. We're not doing the long line work on the roads with the resurfacing. Those we're using contracted services, and that's not out of that fifty thousand dollars. So we are catching up. Some of them, you'll see, we recently, for example, Cove Road, we had that painted because it's in the program to be resurfaced in the next year or two. And so we didn't want to spend the money on thermoplastic to have it milled. So we are actively looking. We just finished up Palm Beach Road. So we are meeting the current standards that are new coming on board with the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Terrific.
Commissioner Jenkins.
So I'm desperately trying to find the so I'm glad to see that you have the turn lane on Southeast Bridge Road there. But I believe I'm going to be killed at that intersection before twenty twenty nine, for one. But two, and more importantly, is that project or the Eastern Flowway project requires the culverts under that intersection. So obviously, we're not going to dig the road up now for the second time to dig it up for the third time, right? So how how does that work?
No, the plan is to to phase the projects together and and try to marry the timing of those projects. So we of those projects, so we can install the culverts under the road prior to the intersection improvement with the turn lane. But, you know, that's, involves working with the property owner, the adjacent property owner on the corner of power line as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll align those projects as we get a little closer. The, the issue is we, we don't own the property yet, and we, but we're getting, we're getting a lot closer once we, and then we're gonna go out for grants for the water quality side of things. So, it is gonna be-
Well, then that can move.
Yeah, we'll adjust the two projects so that they, they occur at the same time, but, but absolutely, you, we only wanna open that up the one time. There is some discussion, too, with the potential for a wildlife crossing somewhere near there as well. So if we could make all of that happen in the same area, then that's something we'll try to make happen. But it'll just require a revision to the CIP once we get closer.
That project's 2025, and that's 2029, is what-
Your grandchildren, your newborn grandchildren will be looking back fondly at your work when they're driving. Commissioner Hurd.
Are wildlife crossings under the road or over the road?
They're typically under the road. The problem you have on Bridge Road, which is, makes this one particularly challenging, is that during the wet season, that water gets up so darn high. It may not be super effective, but we'll, we'll evaluate options. You can put, like, a benched step inside a box culvert. You would just oversize a box culvert and have a step up, so it would be out of the water. That's something we could look at, but that'll be decided as we go through the, the design process. There is a ton of federal, there's a lot of federal money out there right now for wildlife crossings. So, we're, we're looking at it real hard to see how we could make that a potential part of our, our project.
We did put in two wildlife crossings on Island Way and, towards Palm Beach County, when we built that road years ago. It's-
Under grants?
They were, the, the road was actually above, they were at grade, so the, the road actually elevated, and then you fenced it, so you really were putting in a bridge, if you will.
Yeah.
And so that's what might require to do with Bridge Road. And of course, there's other conversations about, you know, trying to reconnect the Loxahatchee with the St. Lucie, which would be really an ideal location to do a wildlife crossing. If you try to reconnect those sloughs, which is a much bigger project, but-
Twenty fifty-seven.
Yeah, I think we all might be dead by then, but yeah.
I won't be. I won't be. Live forever.
That's true. You're right.
Anything else? Mr. Zama, is that the end of this?
That concludes-
Like a natural, like bam, like scene or fiend. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to tentatively approve the fiscal year 2024 Road CIP sheet, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Stormwater.
Stormwater, this is our final Public Works CIP. Our stormwater program, we're asking for a, an increase of four hundred thousand dollars for the hope heights drainage improvements. So, the hope heights, we received funding from FEMA through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to acquire homes, but the second grant that we got was to create an outfall for the neighborhood. So we've worked through the design process, received permits from the South Florida Water Management District and FEC, and we've designed a stormwater system that works by gravity, so we won't need pumps in that neighborhood anymore, if everything goes well. So, it will require some pretty unique construction, which we just, just did large diameter directional drilling up in Jensen Beach to resolve a problem on the Lane Street. Same technology that we're proposing to use in this location to get through some of those big hills, 'cause there's, you know, twenty-foot relief in that neighborhood. There's some really big hills. So, that's what the funding is there. The other things that are, that we're working on, our stormwater infrastructure rehab sheet is one that we use to repair pipes and line pipes, but we've also been using it to match a lot of resilient Florida grants to install backflow prevention devices into our stormwater treatment areas. So some of those older storm, stormwater treatment areas are getting saltwater in them, and we're losing a lot of our desirable plants. And, and it's just because the water levels are higher than when they were designed. So we're, we're modifying those outfalls to mitigate for sea level rise. And that's what we're using the sheet for, is, is to do that. And thankfully, resilient Florida's paying for 50% of each one of those.
Move tentative approval of stormwater.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to tentatively approve the fiscal year 2024 Stormwater Management CIP sheet, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now, let's go on the order of the sheet here, and we will take Community Development next. It's in the front of the book. I see our person, one of my, my friend is sitting here, and I want her to be able to get back to Palm City Place in the patio at Palm City Place.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, Susan Coras, Manager, Office of Community Development.
You're welcome.
So our projects are on course. We continue to focus on providing infrastructure and to follow our community redevelopment plans. There's a list there for you to see that is some of our current projects. And a new one that we've added, Stormwater Drainage Roadway Project. It's a stormwater and streetscape project in Hope Sound, and that's going to run from Dixie Highway and Bridge Road, on Dixie Highway from Bridge Road to Saturn. And it will also include Old Post Office Alley. And that's going to take care of some of the stormwater and drainage issues that have been there for years, and provide a little bit more of a streetscape for the continuation of downtown Hope Sound. We have an estimated TIF increase, and that is due to the growth in values. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's it?
That's it.
Tentative approval.
Second.
Any questions for Ms. Coras? Seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to tentatively accept or approve the fiscal year 2024 Office of Community Development CIP sheet. It was seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Our next one will be airports. Airports. All right, we'll hold off. Give him a moment. Here he is. Hold that thought. Airports. Mr. Carver, it's a pleasure to see you. Welcome. Please state your name for the right-
Good afternoon, Sam Carver, Airport Manager. So, our capital budget is actually decreasing by two hundred and sixty-five thousand. We continue to focus on our airport facility safety improvements. The biggest difference is that this year, we're doing a lot of construction, and next year, we will be in the design phases. So that's what accounts for the negative. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Carver?
Seeing none, move tentative approval.
Second.
Okay, seeing no other questions for you, sir, best of luck.
All right. Thank you.
Stay. We didn't do the vote yet. Could go, could go south. Could be turbulence. Make sure you have your seatbelt firmly strapped across your. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to tentatively approve the fiscal year 2024 Airport CIP, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now you are cleared for takeoff.
Thank you.
When you hear my solid waste puns, they're really- Send the heavy hitter in to do solid waste.
Yeah, Sam couldn't make it. So for the record, Jeremy Kobe, Deputy Director, Public Utilities and Solid Waste.
Yeah, Sam didn't come because you were asking for a four-point-one million dollar increase. He's no dummy.
Which, which in reality, the four-point-one million dollars is, was budgeted in fiscal year 24 the whole entire time. It was actually in the fiscal year 23 budget for 24, so it's kind of like a little fake out there. And-
Jennifer doesn't like the word fake out. Anyway, go ahead, welcome.
Welcome. Well, a little overview of solid waste. No additional CIP projects are out of this year, so the current projects you have in there were in previous fiscal years. Projects mainly include renewal and replacement projects, and also the site construction for the single-stream recycling facility on the old waste management property. And then the major changes in there are really adding additional funds for onsite improvements.
Thank you. Excellent job. Very sharply addressed. Questions for Mr. Kobe?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve, tentatively approve, the fiscal year 2024 Solid Waste CIP sheet, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
All right, we'll move on to utilities.
Not yet. I announce them first.
Oops, sorry. Jumping the gun.
It's okay, you're new. Newish. Our next item is utilities, please.
All right. The impact of the negative twenty-seven million dollars is really due to the fact that the large, two large septic-to-sewer projects, Rocky Point and Port Salerno, were funded in 23, fiscal year 23, which is the major drop-off there, which was roughly thirty million dollars of funding. There is an additional project in this CIP that hasn't been in previous CIPs for wastewater transmission mains and repump improvements for additional flows for the septic-to-sewer projects. The total cost with fiscal year 24, 25, and 26 of that project is roughly eleven-point-three million dollars. And back on the actual septic-to-sewer program, just some numbers to throw out there. To date, we have approximately twenty-eight-hundred homes available since 2019 for, with sewer service, and our goal is through 2027 to have an additional fifty-four hundred homes.
Very nice. Questions about utilities?
Move tentative approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith again. Really did all the heavy lifting today. Commissioner Smith, thank you.
You're welcome.
For a tentative approval of a fiscal year 2024 Utility CIP sheet, it was seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We will report back that you did an excellent job. You're welcome here anytime. Okay, what about miscellaneous? We're gonna discuss miscellaneous?
Miscellaneous we had put in this year due to Newfield with our impact fee credits. You will see a general page in there regarding Newfield and the impact fees. This is brought to us by Growth Management. And we also included that Western Palm City Library in this as well.
Yes, that's the right answer. Anything from the appendix?
So it's just simply a way to document within the development order and our adequate public facilities ordinance, how those projects would be, where the funds would be allocated in accordance with the development order that we approved some time ago.
Need tentative approval for that?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith for tentative approval, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Let me use this time to thank the team for an excellent job. I thought your, your introduction was fantastic, and everything fell into place. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Shelby did an excellent job.
Thanks for going easy.
Baker, excellent job. I thought you enunciated, you were clear. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Kept a light, lively voice, tone in your voice.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Very professional. Anything else from you?
No, mine's separate.
Oh, you have a separate thing? Fantastic. Thank you, ladies, that's all. Not everybody, just them. We have now come to the end of our agenda item, workshop number one. And so at this point, we will take any, we've reached the end of our complete agenda. I would take any public end of the meeting or 5:05 public comment now. Seeing that no one is here for that, I will go to Commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Smith.
All set, thank you.
Commissioner Heatherington.
I'm all set.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Good.
Commissioner Hurd.
I'm set.
I am also set. Mr. Donaldson?
Yeah, just, just two things. One, you know, Sam wasn't here, but Golden Gate had such a strong response from Septic Sewer, they had to put on additional staff to handle the phone calls, so the outpouring of folks wanting to connect has been, it's been fantastic. And the other thing that struck me this morning is we had three of our great leaders in our organization with Jennifer Salis and Michelle Miller and Sally Waite, you know, obviously here for proclamations, but they are all really great examples of, of some of our staff leaders. And, and Sally is an example, was one of those members we sent to Hurricane Ian. And, and of course, one, is she skilled, and two, when you show up as a, as an extra staff, you get all the, let's say, the work that nobody wants to do. And she did it without any question or complaint. And then just recently, she had us doing some exercises this week on preparing in the event that some major event happened to us, and, and we had to move from a facility and things. And so I was just impressed by, one, by her actions, but I thought that really Jen Salis is also, and Michelle Miller are also, just reminder of what such excellent staff we have here, and I just had to say that. So thanks.
You were right to acknowledge them. Commissioner Heatherington?
Just wanna add on Sally's department. They did a fantastic presentation at a luncheon last week for the Stewart Chamber of Commerce. It was well, well done, so.
Excellent. Ms. Woods?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sarah Woods, Martin County Attorney. We received, the county received a request through the Village of Indian Town recently to terminate a housing assistance agreement that had been entered into back in December of 2006. This was associated with the Quillan DRI, which did not go forward and was not implemented. And now I think there's some interest in somebody purchasing that property within Indian Town. And I've looked at that agreement. It requires for, the county was a, was a partner with that along with the Indian Town Chamber of Commerce, Indian Town Nonprofit, Indian Town Holdings, and the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. The agreement requires we have to give thirty days' notice to terminate it. So I was requesting authorization to send our thirty-day notice to the various parties. Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council's gonna do the same in their next meeting. I've been coordinating with them. I'll bring back with, just, and put it on consent, a formal termination once that time's expired so that we can get rid of that. I, I would like to mention that the more things change, the more they stay the same. This housing assistance agreement, which was back in 2006, talks about the need for affordable housing for our teachers and for our government employees. So it's interesting to look back. This was right before the recession, but it's interesting to look back and see, we did attempt to address that issue. But if I could have a motion to authorize me to send this notice-
We authorize the county attorney to send the appropriate letters and advertising if required.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to Ms. Woods' request, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Woods.
Thank you.
And with that, I would let you all know that our next meeting is Tuesday, May 9th, and also to remind the folks at home that are probably trying to plan vacations and getaways, that we will not be having a meeting on Tuesday, May 30th.
That's correct.
So you can extend that Memorial Day weekend one more day and not have to worry about missing one of our meetings. And with that, I wish you all well. Thank you.